Well, I think we should start. I know he's gonna, I know he's trying to get on, I'm sure.
We can, I've got nine, give it till 10. It's 9:59 on mine.
Oh, okay. My, my computer here says 10:02.
Oh, okay.
Check my emails. There's, there's nothing from him saying he's having difficulty.
Yeah.
I thought the cleaning people were coming, and it's not their day. They're leaving. They would have liked, never know. This, this place gets used by a lot of people. And it's cleaned once, once a week, and it's normally Friday. But I think we're good. Let's see, in one of the northwest corner towns, oh, here's Russ. Planning and zoning had a meeting in the town hall parking lot, I think it was up in Canaan.
How'd that work out?
Apparently worked out fine. In the paper, they had pictures of everybody in the parking lot, yeah.
Well, another good place is the park, because all the picnic tables are up there.
I think it's time, time to do, use the park and spread out, yeah.
Hey, Russ.
Hello, good morning.
Oh, boy.
Morning, Russ.
Can hardly hear you, Russ.
Really?
That's better.
Okay. Anyway, good morning, everybody.
Nobody ever, nobody ever said that to me.
Can't hear you. Anyway, um, thank you for rescheduling this. That was a weird evening, the Tuesday of the storm. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order, special meeting of the board of selectmen. And we, I had minutes, the regular meeting July 7th, and our special meeting of July 27th.
Right.
I think I was at every one of those.
Excuse me?
I think I was at every one of those. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting.
Second, you're good.
Yeah, second. Any other discussion? Yes, you were at both of them. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, okay, the tax collectors' report I gave to you.
About minutes of the special meeting?
Four, five.
Minutes of the special meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, he just did the regular meeting.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of special meeting.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, the tax collectors' report. There were one, two, three, four, five tax refunds totaling $136.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have communications from the public. I, and Russ, last night, I might, or I think it was yesterday afternoon, last night, I sent a package with all of the stuff. So you, did you, there is a letter in there from Wayne to verdict?
Yeah, I read that.
Yep.
I totally agree with him.
Well, I don't have a problem with, you know, moving that sign. I mean, I think we could just go do it, move it down so that you could see the intersection piece of it earlier than, that's, I think that's what his complaint was. The mirror, I really have to ask about that, because it's on a state road. There used to be a mirror there once before. It got destroyed in a storm. It was hanging down. And I remember asking an attorney about it a while ago, I mean, many years ago. And they said, do not put it up. The town should not put it up. Because if people are used to it being there, and then something happens to it, and it's no longer there, and something happens, you're liable. It was the same thing when someone went down by Hodge Park and ended up going over the falls. And people were complaining that we should have a sign up there telling people that there is a drop-off ahead. And the attorney again said, do not post anything that, that's town. It's a nice thing to do, and you should do it. But in a storm, or you know, those ice storms that we have, and they takes everything down the river, like the chairs and every, if you don't get it back up, it's a problem if something happens to somebody. So I don't know. I mean, that's, that's what I've been told. I can run it by an attorney again. It is. It's a, it's a, it's a scary spot up there, coming out of there.
It is. I'm scared every time I come out.
I know, it is.
When they're coming up that hill flying, even, even, you know, there's not enough time.
No.
If, if they're speeding, there's not enough time.
Right.
So I know attorneys, attorneys tend to be very cautious. Anybody could sue you for anything. I think if it saved a life, it's worth a lawsuit.
Well, I could, I can certainly have that put up there. It would help.
If I, I agree. If it, if it does help, we'll just make sure it doesn't break and it stays there.
Yeah, well, we all see it enough that if it's getting damaged, all right.
Put, put a sign under it. Use this mirror, your own risk.
Yeah.
The, the state says, uh, your state liability limit it when you, when you use a road, so.
No, I, I agree. Put it, put a mirror up. Used to be there. I remember it, and it was helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is helpful.
All right. Okay, I will do that. I won't even ask the state then. Oh, that probably shouldn't be in the minutes, but.
Darn Zoom. Can we back that up?
Oh.
We going?
Okay, so we're gonna jump ahead. We got a commission and board meeting, board appointments.
Barbara?
Yep.
Were we going to discuss Dr. Clark's letter? It was on the agenda for the last meeting.
Correct. And then, but we did discuss it then, and I was going to speak to him. I, and then, so that's why when I did this, I said, well, we already did, we took care of that. However, I should fill you in. I, I owe him a phone call. I did speak with Bill. Bill said he'd be happy to sit down and talk. I mean, then everything went crazy here. But Bill was not there as a police officer. He did not have his uniform on. He had just happened to go by there when Mike was leaving because he had to go get something. And he mentioned that Mo was come, you know, was saying something to him about being there. So I think that's just a big total misunderstanding. And I certainly, like I said, Bill said he'd sit down, but he was not there as a police officer, because Mo was asking for the police report. There is no report. Bill was there after hours. He went up just to, and it happened to pass Mike, so.
Did, so Mike, does, Mike didn't call Bill?
No, he didn't call him. He didn't call him. He saw him. They were like passing. I thought he called him, is, is what, what I got. And he was passing on his way out, and Bill ended up going in there, so.
I just wanna throw something out. Maybe it's already done, but with Mo Clark, when, when an event is scheduled at the park?
Yep.
Would we just notify Mo Clark, like, a day ahead or a week ahead, just anytime? Just say, Mo, this is happening, and the hours, and what it is, that he won't be calling us saying, what's going on at the park?
Well, last year, I did that, actually, for several years before that, and I would tell him that, you know, like, when Pickett and Fiddlin was there, it was gonna be all weekend, there was gonna be stuff going on. If there was a wedding. But we haven't had anything this year. Really, that was the only thing. And there's, there's been meetings.
We're the movie, the other night. I don't know if he knew about the movie.
That's true, that's right, that's right.
I just notify even myself. I'd like to be notified, because everybody, a lot of people ask me, because we're so close in proximity, what was going on at the park? And nine times out of 10, I have to say, I don't know.
Yep, okay. Well, you're right, there was, but there has not been a whole lot scheduled there.
Right.
This year, and except for people going up and meeting. There was an ice cream social drive-through that the seniors did have during the day. But there's been nothing there at night, except for meetings.
Elaine Urban contacted you, because she had scheduled some kind of a Democratic town committee function to listen to some speakers about two weeks ago. And I knew nothing of it. She, she sent me an email and said, are you coming? And I said, where? And so I'm wondering, did Elaine just assume to go there?
Right. I don't, I don't think there was anything scheduled, and, because Judy takes care of that. But it could have been, it could have been on the, on the agenda. I can certainly send you stuff.
Yeah.
And Mo.
I mean, with all this going on, it's good that more than one person knows what's going on, so we can tell people.
Yep.
That's it for me.
All right. So anyway, we have, we have our commission and board, board appointments. Roxbury Museum. You can't seem to get through to, what's her name, Julie? You were trying to.
I actually, I did get through to her, Jean, and she wanted more information, and I passed her information on to Laura Miller. So Laura was gonna get in touch with you if it was a good fit.
Oh, okay. Okay. ZBA alternate. Don't have anybody. I asked Nanette, she didn't have anybody. I did put it out there, I think, on Facebook, and, but I need to put them, I think I put it once in my email blast, because Wetlands is looking, ZBA alternate is looking, the library. It must have got out there, because someone called, and I pushed, I, after speaking with him, I thought he'd be a good fit on the library board, so I gave his name to Cynthia Newby. But nobody else has responded, so I guess I'll, so I, I'm gonna make a motion to table the Roxbury Museum and the ZBA alternate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have all these inland Wetlands appointments. So we have an alternate that's a vacancy, and we don't have anyone at the moment, so I'll make a motion to table that one also. Unless, Russ, you have anybody that we don't know of.
No, I, I didn't know we had more than one.
No, no, these are reappointments, the other ones.
Oh, okay, okay. No, we talked yesterday about you contacting that lady?
Yes, I will, I will contact her.
If you could do that, that, that would be wonderful.
All right. Um, all right, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to table the inland Wetlands alternate position.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have inland Wetlands, a regular member. Term is up, Sue Fitch. And that was, that was, that was a yes, correct, Julie?
That is correct.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to reappoint Sue Fitch to the inland Wetlands regular member for your term.
Does she wanna be on? Did we talk to her?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good. Oh, good, all right.
She left a message. I reached out to her, left a message, and she called back saying yes.
Yep.
All right, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, I will make a motion for the next inland Wetlands regular member for your term, Rob Horrigan, and he, he did say yes.
Uh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay. Um, I don't know what I did here, but Julie caught this. The Lake Lilinona Authority's, their, their terms are up in December, so I don't know what I did here. I, I thought we had one. I think what it was, the last time, there was a vacancy that meet, that, but it still would go to the term of December. I really don't know what happened there, so I'm just gonna tell you that that was at Lake Lilinona Authority as a mistake, and and that's it. Right, Julie?
That is correct.
All three of them, their terms end in December.
Yes, two of them will be this year.
And so Julie was saying that we were supposed to approve the Lake Lilinona Authority voters, boat patrol. And, but we did do that, correct?
Not this year.
Yeah.
Not this year?
Well, at least. Not that I covered.
Okay. Well, I can't add anything. So you know what? Summer's almost over anyway. We always approve them. I would just like to scratch those two. All right, the library trustee, I'll make a motion to table that also, because I didn't hear back from Cynthia Newby if that gentleman would work out there. So I'll make the motion to table the library trustee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. I don't know what happened. Um, okay, Maplebank Farm. I thought I was gonna have something to report here. You know, Weantinog has a new name. I think of what it is. It's, I don't know, northwest, ugh, I'll find it for the minutes.
I can't remember it either.
I know. So anyway, Weantinog, they, they wanted to do a, a little personal recognition of Maplebank Farm with the Department of Agriculture and just about 20 people, because of the conservation of the farm, that people should know that it is protected for life. There are new farmers there, but Kathy and Howie are still the owners. They sold the conservation easement to the state, and they wanted to do something and present them with something, and they were looking to do it in August, but the storm threw everything off. So anyway, I don't, that's all I can report on it. I just wanted to report on it, and when I find out, I'll let you both know.
Okay.
Okay, hauler's permit. We do have one, I'm sorry, two haulers that have registered, have met all the requirements. Yesterday, I heard from the third person that we, we had in the past, and we let things slide this year a little because of COVID, because it was supposed to be done by July 1. And they apologize, but they're getting their information in. So the fourth one to come in was Triple R Maintenance. He asked for an application. I got that off to him. And I sent you a letter. We do have some issues, and I would like to approve this letter and send it out to deny his application to haul in the town of Roxbury.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter and the sending of the letter, denying his application to Triple R.
I'll second that.
Okay, I will return his $250 registration. I don't know, is there any other, any other comments? I will, I will put this letter in with the minutes, obviously. But there are, basically, to sum it up for the minutes, is that there are violations of our solid waste ordinance. So he does not meet the requirements of that.
Did Gail get a look at this letter, or does she need to have a?
She wrote it, I think.
I asked her to please write it.
Okay.
It's very detailed.
Yeah. We talked about it, and I was taking notes, and then I asked her if she would please write it.
Okay, good.
And I provided her with some of the things that I had, so.
But here's the thing, I, I heard he's hauling anyway.
He is hauling.
Should we warn residents, or do we get in trouble for warning residents that he's not licensed to haul in the town?
Well.
By trouble, I mean, do we get sued by him because?
No, I mean, he's, he's not supposed to be hauling in the town. And what, with the state, when I have, you know, said, how long are you gonna allow this with some of the problems that you have with him? They said, well, it's, you can do something about it, because it's your ordinance that he's also, that he's not complying with. And so maybe we should start doing something about that. I just went by this morning again. And I don't know, I don't know where it's going, but it's, it's obviously not going to our transfer station. But it's definitely trash in this town.
So we know for a fact that he's actually going door-to-door picking up household garbage?
I don't know. I don't know where it's from, but it's definitely being stored over here. And that is a piece that the state has said he is not a transfer station, but he is treating it like a transfer station.
Correct.
And he will come out of there with a full load and go down the road, and within 20 minutes, come back with no load on the truck. Now, where is it going? I don't know, but he is using this as a transfer station, and that is where the state needs to get involved.
Right, we, we should file, we should file a written complaint to the state.
Okay.
Don't you think? I mean, even have Gail write a letter to the state saying we're, he's using it as a transfer station.
Well, you know what? John, John's on top of this, and it's very frustrating, very frustrating. He, John knows what's going on, and he's taking pictures. He sent them to him, so we can try again. We can try again, but I mean, maybe our own police can stop him and say, you're not supposed to be hauling in the town. Because that is our solid waste.
Yeah, that's probably the best way to go for now.
Yep. Okay. Um, okay, Mira, so I will.
Can I, can I ask a question on the, the hauling?
Yep.
Because we have George Stone bring dumpsters up here for demolition debris, you know, two, three times a year. Now, he doesn't have a hauling permit for the town of Roxbury, but he brings his dumpsters in, sets them off, and comes and takes it out. And there's a lot of people with the dumpster service. Now, can we tell Fran he can't do that when we're letting everybody else do it?
I don't know that it is, I don't know that it is trash like that, bulky waste. I don't know that it's bulky waste that he's only doing. But that's what needs, we need to find that out. We do.
If Fran brought a dumpster, which I'd never, never used, if Fran brought one up here and we loaded it with debris, just like George Stone, there, that's the same thing.
Yep.
And we don't require every person that drops off a dumpster to have a hauling permit.
Correct. And, um, but they are, and when they pick it up, they are going directly to where it's, it's supposed to go, either in Danbury or whatever. And here, some of it's coming right here to Roxbury and sitting overnight.
Yeah, I know, I understand. That part he's not supposed to be doing. But he can use his dumpsters, just like everybody else has, and if he picks them up and hauls them out of town, no transfer. That he can do. So if we pull him over with a dumpster on his truck, he, you know, we gotta prove that it stayed overnight at his shop.
I think that's easy to prove.
Yeah, it is. I could go take.
But it's, it's not leaving, it's, I'm not saying it's not leaving town, because it may be going to Washington. But within 20 minutes, that thing is off the truck. It comes back and forth right in front of the town hall, so. I think we, I think we need to delve into it a little bit more.
Yeah, I would have to cop, I won't, just see what they're doing.
Yep, yep. Well.
Okay.
All right, so Julie, what did we do? Did we make a motion to send that? I think we did.
We did.
Jim made the motion, Russ seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Mira, so you know I was trying to get out of Mira. And wrote a letter stating my reasons why, and then I got a, they met again in, in August, August 12th, they met again. And took it up about letting Roxbury out, and they said, it's not that Roxbury is small and it's only 800 tons, but it's, it's a precedence that we're gonna set in letting you out. So next March, we can, so, but Gail said, you know, we were looking at this angle, that some of the deadlines for things were extended under the governor's executive orders. And she said, I think that we can fit this in there and say, no, we, we did do this in time, and we did ask this in time. But going back, she said, you know what? It's gonna be a fight, and I don't know that you wanna fight this. So we just stay in there till March and, and make sure that we get out next March. And I, I do think it's probably.
Yeah, it, it gives us time to have a backup too. We don't have a backup, do we?
Yep, HRRA has said that they would take us, absolutely.
Okay, I, I missed that, okay.
And, um, and actually, that word must have got out, because the Bridgeport plant, whoever, I can't remember his name, called and said that they'd be willing to take our, our trash, and that's a trash-to-energy plant, which for years.
Well, then why not fight it?
Hmm?
What kind of fight would it be? Here's a letter, we had a 90-day extension. You're wrong.
No, but she's saying the fight would be to argue about the 90-day extension, that, that maybe it wouldn't fly. It's a, it's a quasi-state public utility, I mean.
Ah, yeah, yeah, that's, okay, yeah, that's a stretch, yeah.
So anyway, um.
Okay.
March isn't that.
The other thing is, is that, that, you know, the state has said that they're not gonna help with the $330 million. Mira is saying, well, now we have to go and start looking at these platforms so that we can get our stuff out of here. And now the state is giving them a hard time with that. You know what? Maybe we sit the year out and see what happens with them. Because that, nothing's gonna happen in a year, and we're in this, and our, our cost is set, and we know where we are. So I think we just put it in a follow-up for March, and a lot can happen this year. Who knows?
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
So I'm gonna drop that. All right. The steep, um, because of the storm, thank God, the steep grant applications are due this Friday and not last Friday, and I'm almost done with getting ours in. So I just wanted to report on that, because I didn't do anything with it last week. The KERMAS equity distribution, we did get a check from KERMA. Oh, my gosh, here, wait a minute. And let me see. Oh, no, that's not it. Oh, my gosh, I had it right here. I had everything in a pile here. I don't remember what it is. Oh, well, we did get a check. I think it was for $1,300 as a reimbursement from KERMA. And we always put it towards some safety item, and the police had asked if we could get one of those trailers, and I thought we should just put it towards that. Because that was ordered, and that is also something that could come under the COVID CARES Act, something we purchased because of all the, the cars and, that came in after people were coming in from New York, and the speeding and everything else. So I had asked about ordering it before, and we did order it, so I think we should just put this money towards it.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, COVID updates, really, you know, the thing with COVID got, got pushed aside with this tropical storm, and we, we, we haven't had any, a report of any new cases in our town. I think people are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Everybody's wearing masks pretty much when they're supposed to. Haven't had any more complaints. We got a couple that I gave to Bernie, and I also gave to the Health Department, let them address it. But, yeah, there's really not a whole lot. We're, we're still, what we have to decide is, do we wanna open totally for the public to just walk in here? The public has been in the building, but we are, we are basically locked. That, we lock them out until they can get outside and call and make an appointment to come in, but it's working. The senior center, you know, the senior center director, they're upset, you know, that it's closed. They know it's closed. They, they know it needs to remain closed. But I spoke with the friends of the senior center, and they wanted to do a couple of things to keep the senior center alive, at least. to keep the senior center alive at least. And uh, they had a drive-through uh, ice cream event at the park. Worked out very well. The health department was involved. Then I have um, uh, they wanna do a soups on to go. And I spoke with the health department and they said, that could be, that could, they could do that. It's providing a service. It's not a program. So um, we might get that going. But as, and everybody, I, I haven't heard any complaints about us being, operating like this. Have you? Have either one of you?
No. And I agree. I would continue, just like you have been and we have been doing. Um, and give this a little more time before we become. And uh, town hall, I think the town hall is fine. People can call and make an appointment.
There's nothing going through the cracks. There really isn't. Everybody's responding and doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, you know, people are paying their taxes. We are about uh, 450,000 less in tax collections than we were at this time last year. But they have until October 1st to pay taxes. So.
No, I think it's good.
That's that reason. Um, so anyway, the COVID thing is just going along. And uh, we'll just keep operating the, the way we're doing. All right. Recent legislation, I sent you something, the biggest thing that they, they had two things that the legislature was meeting on in a hurry to pass. And they've never passed anything so fast in their lives. And one of them is the, the police accountability. And it's got a, it's got a bunch of stuff. I did give you like a summary that, from cost, I mean Karma. And um, I actually might try to get on to the um, they have committees and they do have a, a public safety slash police committee. And I, I think I might just get on that so that I can keep up on what exactly we're supposed to be doing. But um, Matt Bell was going to look at the cameras that we were gonna need to purchase. And uh, even though they're not for a year, the problem is, it's not even purchasing these cameras that they're gonna have to use. It's body cameras, car cameras. But it's the storage of these films. Because I remember Waterbury just saying, we're not doing this before all of this because it cost them $600,000 a year to keep the films. Um, you know, the tapes stored or whatever. That wouldn't be us, but it is gonna be an expense, you know, that we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to look at. So like I said, I'm, I'm not up on every single thing. But I am going, I think I'm gonna get on this uh, committee through Karma so that I can stay up to date on it. But it's too bad. I think that there's some things in here that really didn't need to be in there. It got passed and they're going to cost us money. Okay. I don't know. Then the other legislation had to do with zoning, but they, they haven't really done anything with that. Getting housing diversity and changing zoning and stepping in and taking over everybody's, everybody's business. But we'll see where that goes. It's crazy. All right. I sent you the fire marshal's report for June and July and the resident troopers' report for June and July. I just, gonna make a motion to accept those.
Make a motion to accept fire marshal's report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion or anything?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, and then, and you said fire and trooper, right?
Yes.
And the only thing I, I would just like to just comment on is um, we had a really great emergency team here during the storm. And it was, you know, Bernie Mean, Sharon from the, from EMS, but it was Sarah Laureate and Todd Wheeler. Uh, really, every, and our, and our public works was outstanding, stepped up and uh, everything was handled really well. Everybody chipped in and did something. Sarah had the EMS people and herself checking on the elderly, who brought them water. Um, it, it was, it was just really organized. It worked out really great. The firemen stepped up to help these guys as flaggers. And uh, they had to respond to a couple of calls, but it was very good.
Good.
And that's it. And I, and we can't really add anything else to this. So
One thing.
Motion to adjourn.
One, I got one. Um, back on our trees, our dead trees. I mentioned the trees up here in Botford. And I don't know if you had a chance, but the one um, near Judge Road and 119 Botford, it's a huge, very dead maple with dead branches hanging over the road. And it's definitely a, a Eversource tree because there's wires very close to it. I wouldn't want anybody other than those guys. Yeah.
Well, I will, we actually got someone, we're going around today doing a lot of the hangers because a lot of things are starting to break again. We just had a tree fall across Minor Bridge Road. And uh, but it's.
There was one, I was up on Painter Hill this morning and the road was blocked.
Oh, really?
Removing, yeah, they were moving a big tree. It must've just fallen down.
Well, uh, like I said, we're doing, we're doing hangers. We have Jonathan Lord helping us do all the hangers today. There's a lot of bad ones that happened after.
Yeah.
So that was across the road?
Yeah. I mean, we sat there for 15 minutes, watched them cut it up and pick it up and move it.
Okay. I don't.
Yeah, this one's a, a safety thing because it's a.
But I, that one is definitely on our list, as is the other. Um, I don't know if they got to the other one that you mentioned to me.
The dead one, it was right across from uh, Golden Harvest Road.
Right.
It's dead as dead can be, but it's a tricky one because it's all covered with poison ivy. And you have to stop your car and look straight up to the top and it's all rotted and pieces are falling out of that.
Those two are definitely on our list and I um, I will call Eversource today about Judge Road because they have to get on to that minor bridge one too.
Dangerous one. They're big, big pieces that are falling.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
All right. Wait, did we do the motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye. See you all later.
We're rescheduling. So wait.
Next time.
The meeting after the meeting. I mean, if I'm away, if I go, no, I shouldn't go away. For this baby. My God, when is our, let me see. When is our? Oh, September 1st, we have a meeting. We have this meeting September 1st. Keep my fingers crossed.
You think, do that, can we come to the town hall, you think? Or? Or, I mean, I, this is working, but I mean, I'm ready to get back to.
Yep. I don't see why not. I don't see why not. We can do that.
I mean.
Church is back. They're meeting here. I let, I let them come in.
Yeah. All right.
All right.
It's work.
Yep. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, see ya.
Thanks, Julie.
Hi, Julie.
Bye-bye.